Good evening. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for August 9th, 2021 to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. All right, we're going to move to item three on the agenda, which is 3A, which is a COVID-19 update. Today, Governor Inslee announced a requirement for state workers and onsite contractors, volunteers to be vaccinated against the COVID-19 as a condition of employment. State employees and workers in private healthcare and long-term settings will have until October 18th to be fully vaccinated. The governor encouraged all other such higher education, local governments, legislative branch, and other statewide elected officials and/or organizations in the private sector to do the same. This new requirement includes exemptions for those with legitimate medical reasons or sincerely held religious reasons. Skagit County currently has a case rate of 155.6 per 100,000 over the last 14 days, and I might say a week ago it was 100. And hospitalization rate is at 6.1 COVID patient per 100,000 over the last seven days. Washington has experienced an increase in COVID cases and hospitalizations in every county due to the Delta variant, with most cases and hospitalizations being among the unvaccinated Washingtonians. All city facilities continue to require masks regardless of vaccination status. The CDC and the Skagit County Health Department recommends all people, regardless of vaccination status, wear a mask when indoors, in indoor public settings where vaccination status of others is unknown. In Skagit County, since March of 2020, we've had 5,715 positive COVID cases. We've had 79 fatalities, and 391 people have been hospitalized. In Washington State, there's a total of 450,716 confirmed cases, and there have been 6,177 fatalities. Vaccines in Skagit County. A total of 155,824 vaccine doses have been administered in Skagit County. This means that 64.9% of all Skagitonians 12 years older are at least partially vaccinated, and 55.1% are fully vaccinated. If you're looking for a vaccine provider near you, check with your local pharmacy. There's also two pop-up vaccine clinics this week put on by the county health department. Tomorrow, August 10th, is the Skagit Valley College from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and August 11th through 14th is the Skagit County Fair from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. No vaccine is 100% effective, and we're beginning to see breakthrough cases in Skagit County, most likely due to the Delta variant. Getting vaccinated remains the number-one thing you can do to protect you yourself against becoming critically ill. Since February of 2021, 95.3% of all confirmed COVID-19 cases in Skagit County have been in unvaccinated individuals. During the same period, 100% of the deaths due to COVID-19 were with unvaccinated individuals. As a reminder, whether you have been vaccinated or not, if you've been around someone who's been suspected or confirmed case of COVID-19, you should get tested three to five days after your exposure, even if you don't have symptoms. And that concludes my report this evening. Any questions or thoughts?
Mayor Geer.
Mr. McDougal.
Actually, just a quick heads up for the rest of the council. Because of the rise in cases recently, I plan to take the next few meetings from home and take advantage of our technology platform to do that. So hopefully, things will cool down here in a few weeks, but, you know, see you over video.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDougal. All right, so we'll go on now to item 3B. It's our Public Safety Committee report.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Miller.
So, Public Safety Committee met last Tuesday, I believe. Yeah, Tuesday last week. And from the Police Department, not a lot, because we got the report from our new police chief in front of council, but we did get additional, some things that he wasn't able to go in complete detail on. One of them was the, I don't remember the Senate bill, but it has to do with the Blake, Washington State Supreme Court decision about drug possession arrests and the challenge of doing, it's now a gross misdemeanor, and the challenge of getting two referrals prior to, so that he was giving us an update on how that is hopefully going to work, but there are needless to say a number of challenges with that process. Talked a little bit about the body cameras, but I think we're going to see that, we are going to see that in front of council fairly soon for a contract. And again, the body cameras were more about interviews for possible felony suspects rather than necessarily a directive of body cameras from the legislature. And I think that was it from the Police Department, and I know Ms. Cleveland will jump in if I miss something on either of these. From the Fire Department, really great report from the chief about community paramedic. I know it's anecdotal evidence at this point, but I think we're all pretty positive. Just a couple of anecdotes. 75-year-old called 911 29 times, I think, and now that call rate is to zero because of our community paramedic engaging. 81-year-old, 41 times, call rate to zero, 911 calls due to engagement with the community paramedic. And then 14 calls down to, I think, one, but the issue was discovered that the wheelchair ramp was really the knee at this individual's place. So the Fire Department pitched in and helped make that happen. So again, early on, but some really good initial reports from the community paramedic. And talked about a little bit of reorganization with captain positions for shift management. And back to the community paramedic, we'll see a memorandum of agreement with the hospital, I think, in the next few weeks. Oh, and that got fully funded for 2021 with a grant, so that was good news there. And I think that's it, unless I missed something.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Really great news to hear about our community paramedic program, that we can make that quick of an impact for three individuals and lighten the call load for our paramedics. All right, we'll move on to item 3C, our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee report.
Mayor Geer.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The HACCS Committee met last Wednesday, the 5th. We talked about the Unite Washington Referral Platform hosted online, and Joanne Stewart is setting up the departments who will have access to that, the Finance Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Library. And that, as a reminder, is for referrals to our residents for social service needs, and that will help us be in contact with providers around the county, which is great. We talked also about involuntary custody of residents that are in danger of harming themselves or others, and that is obviously a very complicated issue. We do have one local person who had demonstrated that she was harmed to herself. Someone from Compass Mental Health was summoned and came out and saw this person about in danger to herself and was able to take her into custody for her own safety. The hurdle there is getting the right person from an organization to come and make that assessment. It's pretty specialized, not, obviously, just anyone can do it. So that is, so far as we know, a success story there. We are communicating with Chief Floyd on a regular basis, who's in communication with other chiefs, like Mike Rivera of Burlington, as we continue to figure out the effects of the new legislation that Mr. Miller had alluded to about use of force, drug possession, things like that, that are often tied in with our mental health and behavioral health issues, also drug possession and dependency. So a lot going on there. Then, some of us attended a webinar about emerging issues in homelessness and learned some things there about how to handle and how not to handle certain situations, for example, panhandling or people living in their vehicles, and that's too detailed to go into now. Captain, I mean, Chief Floyd has also attended a webinar that apparently was very informative and shared information with us, so the HACCS Committee and staff is also exploring that. So a lot more information that we can gather and use together with our social service partners for the better of our community. So we're doing lots of great stuff, and again, our meetings are every Thursday at 9:00 a.m. We've been holding them in person and remotely, both hybrid, so there are always opportunities for people to participate, and we've been very grateful at the level of participation from providers and professionals and interested community members. It's really been great. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Mayor Geer.
Yes, Mr. Young.
I'd like to just, you know, take a moment and commend the HACCS Committee for the work that they do. I know all the other committees do an extraordinary job, but remember two weeks ago, we had a wonderful woman come in here and was in need, desperate. She had been here for a while. Well, you know, she followed up with me, and I can't tell you the number of phone calls between myself and her and Dustin at the Family Center, as well as Bill Hinko at Community Action, and we were finally able to get some help for her. But I tell you, it was about 30 phone calls later between she and I, as well as the other people. But the good news about it was she was very clear, the services that we have here in the area are trying desperately to reach everybody. And without the services that we are pulling together here and coordinating them, there are a lot of people that somehow end up falling between the cracks, but the pain is real. And I just really want to thank all of the effort that went into council and everybody else that's worked toward trying to find a solution that reaches the very people that are in desperate need. And so I know she's very grateful, and I just really wanted to say thanks for that and that we've been able to find some help for someone, even in a system that's kind of full.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Appreciate that. At this time, we'll go on to item 3D, our Planning Committee report.
Mayor Geer.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, so we had a planning committee meeting just before this at 5:00. We talked, we had asked Mr. Meesmer to kind of come up with some, a rough estimate and a drawing of what it looked like to do some possible pull-in parking on both sides on our numbered streets from about Third to 10th. So we kind of looked at those options and just kind of had an initial conversation, brought up our concerns if we went one way and kind of flip-flopped evens going westbound, odd numbers going eastbound, and what that would look like. We are, it is a very preliminary discussion, so it's something that we might start having some conversations with some of the business owners, just to get their viewpoints on things, and also public work, since that would affect things too. So just, that was kind of a fun activity. And then we also talked about just kind of where staffing is with the Planning Department and how busy they are these days. So it was a light meeting, nothing too in-depth, but it was nice to see everyone's faces.
Any additions? All right, we'll move on now to item four, which is public comment. And if there's anyone that is attending the meeting in person or remotely, and you'd like to speak to the council about anything, it's your time to come forward. All right, I have no one remotely and no one in the audience at this time. Okay, so we'll move on from public comment. We'll go to item five, which is our consent agenda, items A through C.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Miller.
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items A Through C.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young. Is there any additional comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're moving on to item six. It's a public hearing, so I will open a public hearing on ordinance 3094, amending the Capitol Facility Plan from 2021 to 2026. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. Sorry, one moment, please. Okay, so this is the, so the public hearing is on the CFP, the Capitol Facilities Plan Amendment. Our city code requires that we have a public hearing that has been advertised for two weeks before we adopt an amendment to the CFP, so that's what we've done. We've concluded the two-week advertisement period. Public hearing is tonight, and the CFP amendment is also required to be adopted concurrently with a budget amendment, so that's on the agenda directly after this. So we went through this material two weeks ago. I'd be happy to go through it again, or if you have any additional questions. Otherwise, America can open up the public hearing, and then afterwards, you'll be able to take action on this ordinance for the CFP amendment.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this ordinance? I have no one attending online. Counselors, a discussion before I close the public hearing. So we've opened it, no comments. I'm going to close the public hearing on ordinance 3094, amending the Capitol Facilities Plan for 2021 to 2026. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Walters.
This amendment provides funding for replacement of those essential school zone signs, so I move approval.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. McDougal. Any other comments?
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Young.
Just a quick question. I'm a little bit of a fiscally conservative, and I was curious, did we try to get any of our money back from, you know, the other guy, the other company that, you know, the school system stuff just really wasn't a good fit for us? It may not have been possible, but I just was curious.
Yeah, the existing beacons that we have in place.
Well, no, I was just curious about, remember the, we're going to replace the signs, and we're going to replace those. There was, the original person or group that we bought them from, they were never really a good fit for us, and they really had issues. And I was just curious if there was any way we thought about trying to get any of our money back from the company.
Yeah, so we didn't have any types of discussion about that internally, and I guess from my point of view, I was thinking that they're pretty aged, they're over 20 years old now.
Yeah, I hear you.
And you're right, though, they're not the, I don't think they're the best fit for us. I know engineering is enthused about these ones that we are looking to buy, and they'll match what other jurisdictions are using in the county as well, so.
No, I'm in total support of this here. I was just curious, you know, sometimes when things are a bad fit, and sometimes when businesses change in their quality of service or what they're producing, I was just curious. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Miller.
Just for Mr. Young's edification, I did ask that question. We're not using the same vendor, so you'll be feel-good about that one.
I really do. Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I'll ask Ms. Hunt to call for a vote.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item seven under Other Business. This is 7A, it's open for public comment. Ordinance 3093, amending the 2021 budget. This is a discussion of possible action. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor. So the item that you just approved, the school zone beacons, you'll see that on this budget amendment as well. So this is just to establish the budget within the annual budget in the Road Fund, where we'll be doing that work. Just a couple other items, the police body cams, I think you've heard about that from a couple times now, I think Chief Floyd was in here a week or so ago giving an update on that. And this middle item of $1.1 million, just as a kind of a reminder, what this ordinance will also authorize us to eliminate that Fund 106, and that's the fund that our TBD sales tax resides in. It actually gets reseeded into that fund, and then we transfer it back out to the Road Fund. Eliminating that, that fund will allow us to just directly receive that money into the Road Fund and eliminate that double budget effect, so. Any questions I'd be happy to answer? Or entertain a motion?
Are there any comments from anyone in the audience on this? I don't have anyone online.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, actually, I really think it's fantastic that we get to eliminate that extra fund transfer and just like, helps, makes the books cleaner and easier and more intuitive to look at. So with that, I move we adopt ordinance 3093, amending the 2021 budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Mr. Young. Is there additional comments or questions? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Walters? Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to item 7B. It's open for public comment. This is our Access Anacortes Fiber Internet update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the audience. I've switched over, and I know that there's been concerns with difficulty hearing me, so I've switched over to my telephone tonight, so please be sure to give me feedback.
I can hear you well.
Trying to get to the ability to... Try this again, I apologize. It's interesting, because it's bringing up a screen that is frozen. Anybody else?
We can see...
Anybody else seeing that?
We can see your introductory slide in the middle, and then you have the presentation on the left.
There you go.
You can't get it to go to slide two.
I cannot. Well, I'll just try, I'll try once more, and then if not, I'll just talk through it. I do have the information available on our website.
Okay.
Very interesting. There we go. Thank you for your patience, and tonight, I'm pleased to provide the 2021 August update on access Anacortes Fiber Internet. And we are transitioning back to meeting with you on the second Monday of every month. We had been pushed out to the third Monday because we had a busy schedule at one point, so it's just been, it's been less time since I provided the last update. But you'll notice that between our July presentation and our August presentation, that we had 808 customers in service in July and 830 in August. Some of that is due to a large project that we worked on at the American, or the Anacortes Housing Authority, and some of it is just that there's less time between our last two meetings. So we have monthly revenue of $54,837 a month with the access internet project. I like to always point out where our customer orders are, and in our current service area, we have a 39.2% market share. We're very pleased with that, as our business plan had recommended a 35% market share was necessary for us to move forward with the project. So that is steadily growing. In the West End, where the construction is currently underway, we've already received 619 orders, which is, equates to 26.9% market rate. And we've talked about our monthly revenue of 54, over $54,000. The Fiber Division cash flows are the same as what we looked at in July. The information has not been updated yet in terms of the operating revenue has not posted. So next month, we'll be able to provide you with additional information, and as we're continuing to move forward to increase our revenue and show that we're working towards a positive cash flow for operating expenses. In our current service area, highlighted in green on the map, we have 90 customers that have orders in queue that we are systematically going through and getting them signed up, not only signed up, but actually installed. If you are a member of the audience that's listening in, and you've received a phone call from CJ Jones about scheduling that, I would encourage you to follow up on that phone call, because once we move to the West End, we'll be very busy with the installations in that area. So we're trying to make good use of the time that we have now when the West End construction is underway. Wanted to talk with you some about the funding opportunities. So the city had a conversation today with the Washington State Broadband Office. They're in the process of identifying how they will be distributing the money that they received, the ARPA money that they received towards broadband. And a new application will be coming out, but we've already spoken with them kind of initially when they were putting in a request, trying to identify the funding that they would need for that, for the West End and Gwamas View for $9.75 million. Last time we spoke, we had been talking about an application or a response for information that we submitted to the Washington State Broadband Office for working with them to apply for a grant through the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. We had requested $8.9 million, and those are in the highlighted areas, the blue, the pink, and the green areas that are shown on the map. We did find out that we were not funded due to NTI's priority being on funding counties with a population of less than $50,000. Today, we date again some additional information that the maximum allowance for this grant application was for $30 million. The Washington State Broadband Office received over $200 million in projects that were submitted, and over $150 million were from entities that were in counties less than $50,000. So we, you know, as a county of over 52,000, we're very close to that. There were still a lot of smaller counties that were not funded with the request. That being said, we are closely following some other funding opportunities that are coming forward. are coming forward. And I wanted to kind of break down as we're talking about what our network expansion areas are. Um, the current area that we're building right now, we call the, the West End, that's west of Anna Copper Mine Road, uh, following the, the, the rest of Fidalgo Island. We're going to be passing additional 2,375 premises. That construction is currently underway and the, the, um, installations will actually begin this fall. We think that with the number of installations that we have already pre-ordered, but that will definitely continue into early 2022. Um, in terms of funding for this project, we're utilizing the Savvy Bank line of credit. And, uh, this is one of the areas that we have applied for the state's ARPA funding through the Washington State Broadband Office. There will be a more formal application that is forthcoming, um, beyond what we have initially sent them. The area that is east of A Avenue that's backfilling our current service area, we call that, this our EDA area. Um, and the reason that we're calling this, and I'll show a map here shortly, is that this is an area that the EDA has provided grant funding for $2.25 million towards the project. Um, we have the design work underway now and we expect that the construction and installations will occur in 2022. Um, the balance of it could be funded through an additional line of credit and we've been working with the finance department to talk about, talk about that. Waymus View is a small area that is east of Anna Copper Mine Road to, to A Avenue and there's about 875 premises there. If we're able to get grant funding secured, we will work on that in 2022, 2022. Otherwise it will likely push out to 2023. And this is an area that we have, um, we're working on doing the application through the, the ARPA funding through the Washington State Broadband Office. The two other areas that we are looking for future expansion are in the South Fidalgo Bay area and that is very much, um, based on grant funding. Um, if we do not receive grant funding next year, then it will be pushed out to 2023 to 2024 timeframe. And the area that we're following, Boroughs Bay, and because it, the majority of that Boroughs Bay area is outside of the city limits, um, we will only pursue that, um, at this point with grant funding being, being secured. So that's kind of just, I like to give people an, an overview of when they can expect that we'll move forward with the network expansion. So this is just another view, um, or way to, to look at that. We've provided some additional information. Um, so our current service area is the, the area that's in green on, on your map. Um, the area that we are, uh, looking and definitely working on this, uh, right now with the design work and then doing it, the actual build next year is that EDA area, which is yellow. And this is an area that we get a lot of questions from the community about how, how did you, you know, why did you skip over me? Um, there's a series of steps that we need to follow as we're moving forward with the federal, um, grant dollars that are, that are coming forward that are very structured about the different steps that need to happen. And so we are systematically working through all those steps to be able to, to get that area built. The West End is currently under construction. And then the areas that we're looking for additional funding on include the Gwamis View, Bureau, Boroughs Bay and South Fidalgo Bay, the areas that are in purple. So we tried to provide a bit more information on the, the network expansion in terms of how many premises we would be passing, what the actual projected cost of that area and what that funding would look like. So this is just a, a, another, um, another way of looking at the, the, the view that we're looking at previously. So our current expansion area in the, the, out in the, the West End is about 17% done. Um, we have 17% of the trenching and the vault placement complete. We're working on, uh, the installations beginning in the fall of 2021. We're continuing to work with, um, securing easements on the, the private streets in those areas. And as we talked about previously, we do have a 26.9% take rate. But anybody that wants to put in order, we are accepting pre-orders for service and it's an easy, uh, step to do just by going to the, the city's website and then access Anacortes fiber internet. Uh, an update on our special projects, uh, we are very pleased and it was a really nice, um, partnership with the Public Works Department, with the Information Systems and Technology Department and the Fiber Department to get the Senior Activity Center online with municipal fiber. So they had had a very spotty service previously where we're actually using an antenna on the top of the roof that was connecting to the police department. They had now are on fiber and nobody could be happier, uh, that it happened about the same time that the, the, uh, senior center was reopening to the public. We're continuing to work with Rock Island Communications on two separate dark fiber leases. Those, uh, will be moving forward in third quarter. We're working with the Swinimish Indian Tribal Community on a business class internet service at their golf station, or, or, excuse me, at the, um, not the golf station, at the, the golf course, sorry. Um, and when we have the service out in the West End, Western Washington University will be having dedicated internet access at the Shannon Point Marine Center. Um, Island Hospital continues with the additional site and they have notified us that that will be closer to, in 20, early 2022, rather than at the end of this year for an additional dark fiber lease. So the coming activity, things that you can expect from us, uh, we're continuing to work on the EDA grant application and that's being processed. We're finalizing the ease, easements with the West End homeowners associations and the property owners. We're continuing to seek out ARPA grant funding for the Washington State Broadband Office and we're following the federal infrastructure legislation. Some early figures, um, we're projected to have initially, what we were looking at last week was a $65 billion nationally towards broadband. And it's expected though, it might be closer, um, to seven, um, 700, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at notes from today's meeting, um, that it may be even higher than that, um, in the infrastructure bill for, for broadband and that it could be up to a billion dollars that could be coming towards the, the state of Washington. So that is good news for us as we continue to, to seek out, uh, ways to be able to, to continue to expand our network, um, and, and possibly go even outside the city at, at some point. So happy to answer any questions that you have about access Anacortes fiber internet. And again, we are just, uh, very pleased and thankful to have the opportunity to be able to, to serve the, um, businesses and residents here in the, the city of Anacortes.
Thank you, Ms. Hsu. Are there any questions, Council?
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Hsu. Um, you and I had had a little bit of an email correspondence earlier today, um, because a question has come up about dedicated internet access that the city is paying WAVE for. Um, and I know there are, there must be good reasons for that, but people have been wondering, you know, why don't we have our own that we don't have to pay WAVE for? Um, if you could, if you could speak to that and fill us in, it would be really appreciative.
Thank you. Great, great question, Councilmember Moulton. Um, the, the city of Anacortes is, um, currently purchases two separate direct internet access routes through WAVE cable. Um, that is what connects us to the Seattle Exchange, Internet Exchange. And if we did not have that contract with WAVE, we would be required to construct that all the way to Seattle, um, a connection to, to Seattle. Once we were, um, would be able to make that connection, which would be very expensive, um, there's not a lot of excess fiber between, uh, on the, going down I-5 on that, um, down to the Seattle Internet Exchange. We also would still have to buy some peering services so it would not take away the, the costs associated with it. So it's not atypical for smaller internet service providers like access to then have a separate, um, DIA access with another provider. So one of the things that is a real benefit to our plan is that we are redundant. So we have a path that goes through, uh, to La Conner and another that goes to Mount Vernon. Right now those are both through WAVE and, and the long-term, we think that there may be even some ways to, to even, uh, further increase our redundancy. So I'm not expecting that we would be able to get rid of that, that service. Um, and I actually expect that maybe the, the DIA, um, contract would increase as we continue to bring additional, um, members, uh, and customers on, online and as the amount of, uh, internet that we're using, uh, continues to increase.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear? Thank you, Ms. Hsu. Would you mind pulling up the presentation and go back to the, um, the parts of town and kind of the number of buildings passed that side?
Yes, yes.
And I just wanted to confirm our current service area is, actually I'll wait until Great.
Is it, I'm, I'm sorry.
Next one.
This one?
Yeah, the map. Yeah, so the current service area, green.
It's coming back. Sorry about that. Okay.
No, it's all good. Refresh time. Uh, the current service area, green, we pass about 2,300 premises, is that correct? Or is it more like 2,400?
Yeah, you're correct. Um, we do pass, uh, um, 2,273 premises.
Okay, great. So we're, we're with the West End, we'll be just a little bit more than doubling it and we'll be going from about, we pass currently about 30% of the addresses in town and then by the end of the year, about 60% of the addresses in town.
Correct.
That we'll pass. We won't have them all activated necessarily, but we'll, we'll at least have infrastructure.
Yeah, we're making a great, great progress, um, by bringing the West End because there's an additional 2,300 premises, uh, that we're passing in that area. So we're, we're doubling the size of our network in one year.
Yeah, that's, that's fantastic. That's a big chunk. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Hsu. We look forward to you.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, I'll move on to item 7C, which is our CDVG and CDVG CV funding update.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience. So each year we're, the city of Anacortes is allocated approximately $115,000 from HUD in our Community Development Block Grant Program. And 2020, uh, the city received quite a bit more because of the COVID responses. And so that total received for the year 2020 was 352,302 dollars and change. And then the amount used through 2020, which includes a little bit of, uh, 2019's, was Now, although that doesn't seem like a lot, if you take a look at the memo in your packet, I'll go through some of the, the programs that were administered with those funds and you'll see that it's helped quite a few people in our community. And so the Anacortes Family Center received 17,378 dollars for public services and providing emergency shelter for women, children and families. The, thus includes weekly case management to identify goals and barriers, uh, to help with aid in clients' long-term success, viability and self-sufficiency. The center reported that they served 197 individuals during the program year beginning July 2020 through mid-April 2021. Um, they also have 20 families on their waitlist and the AFC is one of the only shelters that were able to remain open in Skagit County at 100% during the pandemic because of having separate rooms within the, the shelters themselves. And so I think that's a, a fantastic earmark right there for them. The remaining 98,0528 was allocated to combat COVID-related issues. And then we also received 178,507 in the CDVG Cares Funding. And this is entirely different from other Cares Funding. This Cares Funding comes from HUD instead of from the federal government's, uh, other arms of the government. So with that, 257,000 and change was allocated to small business stabilization grants. And so that, that, that program in itself, uh, we worked with, uh, several different folks within the community to review the applications that we received. Once we knew that they met HUD guidelines, uh, for accepting the grants, these other folks from the community volunteered their time, reviewed the applications and recommended funding for them. With that, there was, um, 156,016 dollars provided to 15 businesses. Uh, one of the, one of the businesses received a second round of funding, uh, and they were able to keep 74 employees working during the COVID response. May not seem like a, a lot, but it is when you think about the pandemic during the time. And some of the funding was spent in the 2019 program year and was reported during that, um, that cycle. So 20,000 in CDVG Cares Funding is also used for a temporary cold weather shelter, cold weather shelter, excuse me. And that was to help, uh, get some of the homeless folks off the street during the cold parts of the winter and put them in a hotel where they could, um, easily, you know, self-distance from each other. Worked out very well. Took a little while to get that program going, but we finally got it going. Uh, 58, 57,890 was allocated to emergency income payments for rental relief to low and moderately income folks. So the, the first part of that program, uh, is one that HUD guidelines would only allow us to provide funding for up to three months, uh, of rental relief on that. That since changed and it seems like as the pandemic carried on, various things changed with HUD and we would end up just having to review and flexibly change contracts as we started moving along. Um, the other, um, issue that came up with that was, is the, uh, Anacortes Family Center did a great job of performing the outreach and allocating the funds through their application processes. But it also required that the landlord forgive any rental that was owed in errors and some agencies couldn't do that. And so what we're looking at now is working with the Anacortes Housing Authority with a little over $24,000 to allow payment of rental relief in excess of three months. So it could go back to six months. So that's, that's a good plus in itself right there. Um, and in that first rounds, the first two rounds of rental relief, we assisted 23 households and expended about $55,000 on that. Another program that we're looking at right now, um, in executing with the Anacortes Fire Department, about 67,200. And that comes partly from Department of Commerce and partly from HUD. And that is, um, delivering COVID vaccines to individuals who are unable to access the conventional back vaccine sites, homebound seniors and those with disabilities and so forth. And we're hoping that that will net about 1,300 vaccinations in total. So, you know, with, with that, I guess what I'd like to say is while it doesn't seem like the millions of dollars that you would see in other programs, we were able to spread it around and I think reach a lot of people. And each, each time a new program comes up, we've got to take a look at the consolidated plan that we developed a year before and then the action plan. We've had to revise the action plan about four times now to help with all these programs. Uh, we're hoping that as, uh, 2021 moves along, we'll be able to secure some more funding from HUD and use that as, uh, to benefit the community as well. So I know it's rather brief and I didn't have a PowerPoint, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those as best as I can.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
You know, I, I just really wanted to comment and to commend you and your department for the hard work you guys put in. I know that, you know, 2020 and 2021 has just been almost required on the fly strategic thinking and it was so fluid. And. required on-the-fly strategic thinking and it was so fluid. And yet, at that, you're trying to reach out to as many people as possible to address the needs to keep the economic side of what makes our city so wonderful running and running well. And, you know, I've deliberately observed very carefully the reactions and it's really been spectacular. I think for a city of our size or even just a city, I think that you guys have done a stellar job. Even this past weekend with the Arts Festival, I was, it was sort of a smaller version of what we normally have, but I watched the use of the parquettes and it was just such a good thing. And I know that that was a lot of work and a lot of effort. And so I just really wanted to commend you and your department as well as the council and all of the funding sources for the diligence put into trying to help us come out of this as whole as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any other comments? Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meesmer, for your presentation. And many thanks to you and Joanne Stewart for being so flexible again in this time of great need and changing regulations. I know that HUD money, it has extremely rigorous requirements that have changed over the months and you've adapted to those. And I think it's very significant that 74 employees kept their jobs, 15 businesses stayed open, and at least more than 23 households are able to stay in their homes. And that's a huge impact. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mayor.
Mr. Walters?
I want to echo Ms. Moulton's comments. Just think of how efficiently this money has been spent. You know, some of the numbers might seem large, $42,000 for vaccine response. But if that got 1,300 people vaccines that wouldn't otherwise have gotten them, that's 30 bucks apiece. You can't get a Band-Aid at a hospital for 30 bucks. I mean, it is an incredibly frugal but also efficient use of this money. And I'm very pleased to see that we'll be spending some of it on rent relief for the housing authority because as we've discussed in the HACs Committee, and having those committee meetings has been critical to making sure that those service providers are having conversations about what their gaps are and how it is we can fill them. But if we can keep families from becoming homeless, that is hugely important and hugely efficient in terms of the use of this money. I only wish that we could get this amount, which is still not a very large amount, even though it's three times what we usually get every single year. And we need to figure out how we can work that angle because it seems that we are getting less CDBG money, less American Rescue Plan money than other jurisdictions of comparable populations. And it's still unclear to me, even though we've reached out to Congressman Larson's office and got information about this as part of the American Rescue Plan, exactly why it is Anacortes is short-changed. There may be a federal funding formula that needs adjustment, but Congressman Larson's office achieved that in the American Rescue Plan for another special taxing entity, and that's Payne Field. And so we ought to be able to pursue that in the future, in the next big federal package to correct this issue for us going forward. But kudos.
Any other comments? So, you know, it's, we've been nimble and the local government can be very efficient is what this report tells me. So thank you for that.
I'd like to take just a moment, Mayor, to thank Joanne Stewart. She's been a great help throughout all this process.
All right. So I concur. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Yes. All right. Any other comments? Thank you. Great presentation, Don. All right. So now we're going to move on to item 7D, which is Resolution 3048. This is approving the Fidalgo Island Water System Asset Transfer Improvement Agreement between the city and the Public Utility District Number One of Skagit County. This is a discussion item this evening with possible action. Mr. Buckamire. Can you turn your mic on? I don't feel like it's on.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Don took his mask off, so I'm going to do mine too while I'm talking. I'm only here to introduce Brian McDaniel, our Water System Manager. And, I don't know, just to say that this has been, this is a milestone for me this evening. Whether or not there's an affirmative vote, it's, still, we're getting, we're getting in front of our city council. I think I started this 12 years ago. I can't remember. A long time ago, brainchild of mine. And thanks to Brian and Nicole Tesh, they've picked up the ball and ran with it. And we're sitting here in front of you tonight. So thank you.
Mr. McDaniel, welcome.
Thanks, Fred. I guess he got to take his mask off. I get to as well. Might help me. Good evening, Council, Mayor. It is my pleasure to be here in front of you finally. I get to come and present the Fidalgo Island Water System Transfer. The COVID's been challenging and I'm really excited to be here. I thank Fred for this, giving me the opportunity to be here and be able to present this for you guys. So let's see if I can get the All righty. So the Fidalgo Island Water System Transfer Agreement, we're asking to execute this. As Fred mentioned, this has been a service area expansion that's been going on for, at least since 2010 in my research. Wanted to throw a map in here, just kind of give you a geographic reference of where we're talking about on the area that we will be taking over as part of the service area. A little bit of a brief description of what that water system is comprised of. There are four reservoir sites that hold about 0.8 million gallons of water in storage. There is one pump station, pretty small in size, about 500 gallons per minute. And there's roughly about 17 miles of water main within it. So relative to the city system, it's a pretty small area that we're taking over, about 720 customers. One of the questions that comes up often, they ask, that I've been asked, it's like, Brian, is this a good deal to, for the city to take this over? And it's like, that's a very valid question. The research that was done in 2018 was, StanTech was hired to conduct an evaluation of that water service area and, you know, do an evaluation. Is it in good shape? Is it, is it, is it going to be resilient? And does it make sense for the City of Anacortes to take over that service area from the Skagit PUD? And within that analysis, there was a cash flow analysis. They did an asset valuation in addition to a little bit of work done on what is it going to cost the city in terms of staffing to actually assume this water district? And the staffing portion was less than a quarter FTE is what was required to take this over, to actually run that. So assuming it would be less than a quarter FTE, there's some things that we've been working on internally as this thing's been processing to show how that can be absorbed within and not coming to council and asking for additional FTE. The second thing that we looked at from a high level is, when we look at a water system, the health of a water system, one of the big things that jumps out at us, unaccounted for water. How much is it leaking? Does this system leak quite a bit? And so the Fidalgo Island Water System, I plotted this graph. This is an annual report on their annual water loss. The Washington State Department of Health says that water systems that leak more than 10% of their water that they're producing need to actively do something to help reduce that, to get it below 10%. The Fidalgo Island Water System, the past couple of years, has consistently been at 6% water loss, which is, in my opinion, a very healthy water system. So there's not raging leaks and a bunch of unaccounted pour water going everywhere. There, the peaks that we're looking at, there's just a few years there that were over 10%, but there were some improvements made to reduce that. And there's several things that can be done to reduce that unaccounted pour water. So in terms of the leaking water, it looks very sound. The acquisition of the water system also, there's a couple of benefits for the city's existing system that are kind of tucked away in there that weren't included in the StanTech memo. One of the connection points that'll be made when we finalize, the PUD completes their projects, we're actually going to loop some of the City of Anacortes existing system to improve some of that water quality. It'll increase flow and circulation. So that's a benefit that's actually going to come from this. In addition to that, there, I was looking at the fiber presentation earlier, that these stations that are placed out in the remote sites, they're well within the existing fiber networks that we have that when we connect these could potentially be an expansion. So there's some benefits that come along with that. And again, those are just being evaluated and just being talked about at the high level right at this point in time. Another thing, looking at the Fidalgo Island Water System, I think of, okay, well, how does, how does the material compare to the City of Anacortes's system as it is? We look at asbestos concrete pipe, the AC pipe. Water systems throughout the years have been targeting AC pipe because this material, it fails from time to time and it has a higher failure rate than the other materials. So, you know, in comparison, what percentage does the Fidalgo Island Water System, what's it made up of AC pipe compared to perhaps the city system? So when we look at this chart, I kind of threw together a little bit of the City of Anacortes AC pipe percentage throughout our water system. It's running right about 20%. Thanks to the funding stream, the city's been very proactive about aggressively replacing that asbestos pipe because it does fail. And when it fails, it fails pretty big. But in contrast, the PUD system really is not that much more AC pipe. So when we think about the risk and the liability of, you know, how much AC pipe's out there, you know, it's running right around 25% in that neighborhood. We look at terms of the type of piping that's out there with the gold, I call it the gold standard in piping. I know I like pipe. The gold standard of water pipes, ductile iron, because it's so resilient. And, you know, it doesn't fail as much as the others. So looking at the Fidalgo Island Water System as compared to the city existing system, you know, we're sitting right about 45% for the City of Anacortes. However, the Skagit, the Fidalgo Island Water System's above 50% ductile iron pipe. So, you know, it actually, there's a lot more there in resilient pipe. There's other materials out there that are not included in this chart. I grabbed the two high ones that we look at, asbestos concrete and ductile iron. So relatively, it's about the same looking at it from that perspective. The reason for taking over the service area, the parties have determined that transferring the Fidalgo Island Water System to the city will improve the maintenance and emergency response time and result in economic and water service-related efficiencies and a continued operation, maintenance, and improvements of the Fidalgo Island Water System. Some key things about the agreement that were really key, there were several projects identified early on in that, a couple of evaluations that needed to be done to bring the system up to what would be considered a good spot for the city to take over the operation of that. So we resulted in three key projects that needed to be done. Those three key projects are about $1.5 million, one of those being the Semelk Reservoir Abandonment and Pressure-Reducing Valve Station Relocation. That reservoir is a wood stave reservoir. It's actually constructed of wood. And so that replacement will be done. And then there's some pipe pieces that need to be replaced with that. Also, the Bridgeway Reservoir Abandonment, because we're connecting to the city system, the reservoirs there at the Bridgeway reservoirs are not needed. So because we're running the system off of the city, the water that's in the city reservoirs versus the Bridgeway, so those won't be needed. So that will be part of the, one of the key projects that needed to be done. And then finally, the Satterly-Jabalter Road component, and that is a section of AC pipe, and here again, that word AC pipe pops up, that pipelines needed to be replaced. When we relocate the pressure-reducing stations, it's going to increase pressure in certain places in the water system. So that piece of pipe has seen some failures and the city said, hey, we should probably get that replaced before we take this over. That's, there's some risk there.
Mayor.
Mr. Walters?
The second project on your list there, the reservoir abandonment, is there a benefit to the, a real benefit to the city for abandoning that reservoir?
For manning the reservoir?
For abandoning it. Why not, if you, if we already have it, why not leave it in place?
I believe the, leaving it in place, the elevation of our water tanks when we switch it will be above those reservoirs. And I'm not sure of the full evaluation of the abandonment of it, of removing it and keeping it. But I could look into that and report back if that's needed.
Okay. It's just a, it's just a question in my mind as to whether it really serves a purpose for removing it.
One of the, one of the pieces of the abandonment, the condition of the reservoir, it may not be conducive to keep it to read, to get it, to get it back into the...
So is that part of the answer?
That's, that's part of the answer.
Okay. All right.
Hope that helps.
Yeah, that's a good, a good answer.
All right. Okay. The projects that we were just talking about, the Skagit PUD, will have two years to complete those projects. Within that, the, once those projects are completed and accepted by the city, then the transfer will happen. Within that agreement, also, there is a component of, you know, this timing of transfer. So the PUD was asking to say, hey, we can read the meters for you guys while you're in transition to move to the new system and get our customer base pushed over there in that three-month transition window. With that, the city asked if we could actually put some of our meter-reading infrastructure in prior to that transfer happening so that when it does come time to transfer that, it's a smaller window. So what this means is that, once the projects are completed, then the city will have X amount of time to start reading those meters and billing our customers. But there's going to be a lag and some administrative things that need to be done. By allowing the city to get in and start putting some of that infrastructure in to read those meters, it shortens that window of time. So that's, that was the purpose of adding those two components to that. Another really good thing that's happening as far as the timing, the Water System Plan Update is due this year with the Department of Health, the planning document for the City of Anacortes. And with that planning document, the capital improvement projects that are included, that have been included with the Fidalgo Island Water System can now be rolled in and evaluated against all the other projects and competing priorities. So it's a, it's a good thing to get that lined up at this time, too. There were some other projects that came along with that evaluation that were not included in the top three priorities. So there were some pipeline replacements that were identified early that felt that they needed to be done, but they didn't rise to the top of the list. And with those, I might point out that this table came from the 2018 evaluation that we have. And so the top three projects, they were estimating, the project estimate was $746,000. Well, the actual today, what they're looking at for the planning estimates are $1.5 billion, so effectively double. So anything that we're looking at on this chart, just assume it's double. With that said, the, with the cash flow evaluations of an estimate of capital projects funding $350,000 worth of capital projects annually, the replacement, the cost estimate for the four, five, six, seven, and eight was roughly $7 million. So when you calculate that out, just calculate it out, it's roughly 20 years to complete all those projects. So what that's telling us is that the cash flow and putting together a 20-year CIP, there's enough cash flow there to complete the priority projects and effectively be self-sustaining.
Mayor.
Mr. Walters?
And we have a reasonable expectation that we have 20 years to complete those projects?
A reasonable expectation. The consultant that identified this in 2018 projected that out as well. So that's how, that's one of the reasons the three projects lifted to the top versus the pipeline replacements. An overview of the timeline, December 31st, just kind of a timeline of how the events happened and how we got here today. December 31st, MOU between Skagit PUD and the city was executed to start drafting the transfer agreement. March 5th, 2020, Skagit PUD and the city held a joint open house session with their customers. Key thing about the timing there, COVID's right there at the beginning of that. So due to the COVID delay, we finally got the ball picked up. Fred decided to hire me to help me, help the city get through this. And I said, great, I'll do that. That was a joke. And Tuesday, July 27th, the Skagit PUD... the Scagit-PUD commissioners authorized the general manager to sign the transfer agreement, as we see tonight. And then August 3rd, we put out a civic alert on the website notifying that this action was coming before council. August 2nd, the transfer agreement presented to the Public Works Committee. August 9th, that's tonight, the Resolution 3048 presented to council for comment and approval. And then, once everything is done, if we execute the agreement, 2024 completion of the three priority projects and then final acceptance and the transfer will happen as far in terms of timing. And that's what I have for the Fidalgo Island Water System Transfer Agreement. Assuming questions, that's Mayor.
Ms. McDaniel, just for the public, and maybe you or Fred can answer this, why this project, why this is important for the City of Anacortes to take this project on? I think for the general public to understand why this was such a good idea and why we're doing it.
It's important, the impacts to the existing city as we're operating our system now. It sounds reasonable that the location of the Fidalgo Island Water System will be better served by the city just due to geographic location. Services will be quicker. It demonstrated that it can be self-sustaining. And so the impacts are basically neutral. And that's why the agreement between the Scagit-PUD and the city, it's a neutral agreement, it's just handing it over. So there will be some opportunities to improve the City of Anacortes Water System based on some of those water quality characteristics that will be helpful. There will be some opportunities for us to do some more routing of water, if you will, kind of some operational strategies that will be open to us now that are not. And again, the impacts to the full-time equivalents, you know, we're under the quarter FTE, which can be absorbed through some processes and modifying how we do our operations day-to-day. So it will be a great benefit to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
Mr. Walters.
Well, and the red area on the map is the PUD service area, but the rest of the island is the Anacortes service area. And so we're already providing water right next door. And if we get the benefit of these inner ties, as you were describing, our system will work better. Besides, so that's a big benefit to the city. I think the economies of scale that we gain are another big benefit because the smaller the water system, the harder it is to pay the operator and pay all the other employees that we need. But it'll be a huge benefit to development in that area, not to encourage more development, but for people that are just building houses and connecting to the water system, to be able to just go to the city and ask for permission to connect. Because right now, they may be getting a connection from the city anyway, even though it's outside our service area and they got to go through PUD. And it is another level of government that isn't necessary. So I think we're achieving some real efficiencies here on a variety of fronts.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So it also is going to, my understanding is it's going to pay for itself. And at the same time, hopefully, the city will see a little bit of a profit, perhaps? Or no, it's just going to pay for itself, which is fine.
Yes, it will pay for itself. And so the funding of the reserves above the $350,000 capital funding, it's assumed that we'll be funding approximately $85,000 annually in reserve.
Great. That's good news. And also, I just want...
Thanks for the question.
Thanks. I also wanted to mention that I believe that the current rate payers of the Fidalgo Island Water System will see a reduction in the bills that they pay. Is that correct?
The reduction will be very small. It'll be slight. So it, from their perspective, really, as far as the rate, the models show that it will be pretty flat.
Okay. But they'll be getting, I mean, I'm sure the PUD is giving them great service, but they could get even better service due to how we already operate in that area as a city.
Yeah, we think of it in terms of response times with the geographic area that we're right here, we're next door.
Great. Thank you. And thanks for an excellent presentation.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller and then Ms. Cleland.
Yes, since I don't sit on the Public Works Committee, I was asking a number of questions of you folks earlier and I appreciate the good answers and I think you've got them all. Because I was asking, you know, the business case analysis, which I think is good. You know, the profit question is in reserves, but it's really, do we accept the 2018 consultant report as the right answer to get to that business case analysis that we're not taking on the burden of fixing up the system? And I think, I think we're there. I just, you know, wanted to openly discuss that part because that is really the, kind of, besides all the good stuff that we're going to be able to provide better service and the tie-ins, the real business case analysis is, okay, are we acquiring this system? Do the math, 720 customers, what does that generate? And you've done it. So I just wanted to point that out, that you've done it. But it is, you know, a lot based on that 2018 report. So there's going to be some unknowns in there as well. But I think we've done our homework on this and I think it's, I think it's good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mayor Gere.
Yeah, Mayor Gere, thank you. So I really appreciate this presentation. Reading our packet, we didn't really have the maps available to us. And someone who doesn't sit on the Public Works Committee, I'm a visual person, so this is very helpful. And just so that it's kind of clarified at home, the red line is the boundary of this expansion, potentially. And essentially, north along Highway 20 is already within the city limits and is already provided by city water. So the proximity makes a lot of sense. I guess my concern is kind of what Mr. Miller referenced, is that 2018 analysis, great if they're going to do those top three projects. I would like to have more confidence at those additional four projects that are going to be amortized over 20 years, that we've really kind of got our head around that scope and that there aren't additional projects that are going to be triggered based on them. Because it seems like, you know, when you're doing one thing, we might as well do the second, third, and fourth thing because it's more efficient. So has that been discussed internally? And are we confident in that? And are we still confident that a quarter FTE is really going to satisfy? That's where I'm at. I understand the benefit to the PUD. I'm concerned that we're overextending ourselves as a city when it's not our current responsibility.
Yes, and that's very valid. And I appreciate that comment and question. To try to peel maybe a piece of it, and I'll start with what we have looked at. During the analysis and looking at what, I call it the StanTech memo, it's the 2018 memo, those numbers of pipeline being replaced, if we looked at just saying, okay, the entire system is comprised of this many miles of asbestos concrete pipe, planning level numbers, what would it look like if we were to replace every piece of that? And we have put that into the model of just basically flatline model, you know, putting this much pipe out. And we're pretty confident that we could replace almost all of the AC pipe within the 20 years. So that was the, that's when the aha moment said, hey, you know, really, as you start prioritizing projects and putting those together, you'll find savings within and grouping projects together. And so from just looking at it on a spreadsheet, it really doesn't make sense to do a section of pipe over here and clear over on the other side. Maybe you want to do three of them over here. So your cash flow will go up and down as you ramp up some of those projects and drop a few off. The other thing to keep in mind that staff looked at, to speak to the staff time, when we start talking about major capital improvement projects like these and replacing pipes, that takes staff and it takes a lot of staff to do the capital component of it. So folding those projects into the existing projects that are run by our engineering department, we need to take a look at change management and exactly how those projects are going to be attacked. So looking at the $350,000 rough number for the annual spending for pipe, it's well within reason that we could roll those pipe projects into the existing ones that we already have planned. So when we look at the Water System Plan Update, as we look further beyond those first couple of years of replacement, we will roll all of those together as well. Hopefully that answers.
Mayor Gere. When we are doing projects, pipe replacement projects in this area, we'll be doing so in county jurisdictions instead of city jurisdiction. I thought that you had said something about PUD would assign their franchise agreements to us. Is that still true? I don't see that mentioned in the agreement. And does that require consent of the county?
So the process for that, I apologize, I'm not clear on the process. We did evaluate that with counsel, legal counsel, and that is going along with the agreement. We had to validate, all of the service area was included in the existing city franchise agreements. But yes, the PUD franchise agreements are coming along with that. So the city has franchise agreements within this area already. So it's included in our existing franchise agreement.
Okay.
Hopefully I didn't confuse that too much.
Mayor Gere. I feel confident that you've thought about it. And that's just the key.
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. McDaniel. A quick question on your system utilization slide, where it looked like over the last half dozen years or so, maybe seven years, the overall utilization or the overall consumption increased about 20%. Do we have a sense for the driver of that increase? Do we, is it population growth in the area? Or is it drought and a lot of irrigation going on?
I'm not sure of what exactly drove the increase in the 20, we see it in 17, 18, 19, excuse me, 20. I would, I would hope that that's probably about when we calibrated our meters, we were solving the water. But it's, I'm not sure exactly. I have not reached out to PUD to find out what caused that spike, if there was maybe a development or something that increased those numbers of consumption.
That's right.
But it is significant, yes.
Yeah, for that timeframe, it's a good amount. So, okay, thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
No, just in follow-up to Mr. McDougal's question, it would be interesting, just out of curiosity, to have that understanding of what was that change? If it is attributable to anything that we can pinpoint, but if not, that's, you know, okay, too. But if it is, I would be curious to know the answer to that. Thank you.
All right. So tonight, this is a discussion with possible action. And if, you know, if you don't have all your questions tonight, we can bring this back or we can take action, whatever. What is your pleasure, counsel? Anything else we need to know before we take action?
Personally, I'm comfortable in moving forward unless there's any reason anyone can think of why we should not largely. The questions, the due diligence to understand what we're really getting into. And I think, you know, to Ms. Cleland McGrath's question, that's also been answered. And, you know, the efficiencies of scale, all of those things are addressed. So short of that, I don't know why it would behoove us to wait any further unless there's some additional questions. So unless there's not, I will make the motion unless someone else has an objection. All right. I move to approve Resolution 3048 approving the Fidalgo Island Water System Asset Transfer and Improvement Agreement between the City and Public Utility District Number One of Scagit County and its execution by the mayor of the city and providing for related matters.
Second. Your motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Moulton. Are there any other questions? This time, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, our final item this evening is 7E. It's a contract to war for the Census Water Meter Software Number 21-136-WTR-001. This is also a discussion with possible action. Mr. McDaniel, here we go.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me again. Our favorite subject, water. So before us, we have a Census Water Meter Software Agreement to execute. It's a software-as-a-service agreement. This pertains to our water meter and water meter reading system. There is a graphic that I included in the slide to kind of walk through and explain exactly what are we talking about today. So the water meters that we currently have in the ground, they are connected to a radio, if you will. That radio sends a signal currently to a truck that drives by. What we're talking about today, and that truck collects the information and brings it back to City Hall and it's downloaded onto a computer and the bills come out. What we're talking about today is AMI, which is an automated meter infrastructure network, where that radio communicates by the house and it goes up to the cloud to a cloud service. And then that cloud service, the software as a service, is the blue bubble in the center of the screen. That blue bubble provides data storage for meter-reading information where consumers can actually go to that cloud service, get information at the same time that utility billing goes to the same site, pulls that information down, and then creates the bill and generates them. So we're here to talk about and for Public Works to give you a briefing on what that software-as-a-service is and what we're asking for your approval. And it's the blue cloud. It's the thing we really can't touch. The City of Anacortes, our water meter configuration, I like the photo here. It kind of describes what we're talking about. The water meter being on the right, that is in the ground in the yards in front of properties. The little white box kind of to the left side is the radio. It's the physical radio that communicates. These components are independent. And so in the prior meetings, we gained authorization from you to sole-source the components as they are proprietary and they talk to each other, as is the software that we're asking for with the software-as-a-service this evening. So we have the radio component and then we have the water meter component. So the radio collects the information off the water meter. The radio sends that signal over to a drive-by, what we call the drive-by meter-reading truck. In the new configuration, the radio will send a signal to an antenna base versus a pickup truck driving by on a continual basis. That information is backhauled to the cloud service. Right now, the map at the top grabbed a piece of City Hall. It's interesting to know that through the years, as technology advances, that of course, improvements come to those components that we install. And we took a water meter, which was a mechanical thing, and we added a little bit of technology to it. And as things have progressed, updates happen. Those radios, when the city originally launched the meter-reading, drive-by meter-reading system, the radios that came along with that system became outdated and they operated a lower frequency. So the vendor said, we need to switch the radio type, so we're going to put this new improvement in. And with those radios, you have an option of going with Radio A, which is a stripped-down model of the original radio we had, or Radio B, which is one that can actually convert and go to what these antenna-based units are at the same cost. So our distribution team said, this is an opportunity for us to capitalize on this. We're getting some warranty dollars to replace the radios that are failing, that the factory is warranting for us, to get to this other platform. So that little white box, the decision was made a while ago to go to this newer type. What that has done is afforded the city to look at an option of the antenna-based radio units. The, currently, there are, you can see the blue and red dots. The red dots represent the radios that need to be upgraded to this newer platform to be able to communicate to these antennas. And so as it stands now, we have about 40% of the entire system turned over to this radio that speaks to the antenna directly. And it can do both. It can talk to the truck and it can talk to the antenna. And the advantage of the, one big advantage of the antenna radio read is that that read is instant. So you can go from a computer... So, you can go from a computer and utility billing can look up a read and see what that read is actually doing in real time versus waiting 30 days for the truck to drive around and get those reads. There's, there are a lot of benefits that come along with that. But the point I wanted to make, that's really hard to write in an email and illustrate, and I get to talk with my hands more, that those radio antennas were actually updated, upgraded to the newer style. When we sole source to that new style, they're proprietary, so they go with the meter, we asked council, we need this many radios to go with these meters. And so, that was the prior ask at the prior meeting. The software goes in concert with that, and it takes us to that next step of actually putting it on the cloud service and being able to use those antennas.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
So, are you saying you've now got enough antennas to outfit all the other dots on the map here?
So, that's a great question. So, the idea is to do this over a phased installation, as we've been doing. We've been slowly moving along, moving these on. We're at 40%, where it takes multiple antennas across the system. You know, we got a lot of mountains and valleys and hills to get around. We're assuming it's going to take approximately five of these antennas to reach all of the meters that we have in the system completely. And I might be getting ahead of myself a little bit. So, those five, it's right there on the next slide, those five antennas, we, the, over the next period of five years, we plan on funding the capital facilities plan to get to that point to 100% and installed by staff.
And so, are you going to roll out the new antennas, not the collectors, but the individual antennas for the meters in a geographic area? They look like a pretty random distribution now.
It is. The driver, there were some things that came to light that we found out that the traditional antenna that can be installed is a pole, you have to construct a pole and, you know, put the hoist up. We do these propagation studies to find out where the antennas need to be placed and what meters are actually going to be connected to each antenna. It happened to be that City Hall is the right height to place an antenna, and the construction is pretty minuscule of putting an antenna on the roof, and we can grab most of the commercial district with that, which includes March's Point, the industrial customers. So, that will be read off of an antenna, and that was part of that sole source package that you saw prior as well. That was one antenna unit.
And what is the cost of the antenna collectors?
And those are project-specific as well. So, the antenna on the roof here would be, I think, I don't have the exact number of that, it was under $30,000, I believe. Where we're estimating some of these remote sites where there actually might be some physical construction, right about $100,000 each. So, there's a pretty big delta between those. So, maximizing those dollars with City Hall with an antenna, we can launch the software, get it up and running before we convert the whole city over.
And did we include this entire project in the capital facilities plan?
Yes.
It sounds like it's approaching a million dollars overall for the whole project?
Fully built out, I'm thinking it's about 1.5.
Okay. Does this save us money?
Yes. There are, the amount of savings that come along with this, there are savings that are hard to capture as well. The savings, I think of it in terms of customer service, water conservation, and those sort of items. The things that come along with this, if a customer has a leak, and we don't have to wait 30 days for that leak to be identified and the customer know that they have a leak, the system can actually call them, text them, and say, hey, your water meter's been spinning for 24 hours, you might want to think about doing something. So, in terms of water conservation, there's a fair amount of savings there. The savings as far as understanding different pieces of our water system, and what is flowing and what areas and what zones will actually help maximize our pressure management, our flow management of our system, which reduces water main breaks. And these benefits go on and on, you know, there's so many. It's a piece of technology where we were getting information at 30-day intervals, now we have it at the minute. So, extreme amount of savings, some quick savings, imagine coming in to change, a customer comes in to change their water service, maybe they're moving, and we need to send a field man out to, a field person out to get that read, bring it back to City Hall so that they can do a final bill closeout. That's all done on the computer screen now. They don't have to wait. And so, a customer will act, it's instant, they can close their readout, new person can come in, sign up, and it's instant, we're not rolling a truck, we're saving those costs as well.
So, those sound like really useful theoretical benefits. How frequently are these antennas actually sending information up?
And that's a great question. So, they are on battery?
Right. So, they can't be continuously transmitting?
No, and that's the question as you start launching this system of, how much information do you want to bring back? And every time, we call it waking the radio up, it's when it's calling the radio and saying, I need your information. That takes battery life. So, 15-minute intervals is, seems to be the industry standard, is what most are grabbing.
Do we achieve 15 years of battery life at 15-minute intervals?
According to what they're providing us with the last purchase, yes. The guarantee is 12. I believe it's 12 they're guaranteeing.
Seems pretty good. I am aware that the meter reading truck and the old-style radios did have some issues with communicating the right numbers occasionally. Do we expect this will be more accurate?
We do. And so, that's a good point as well that I did not capture in the presentation, that when we think in terms of every month, we go and read a route of water meters, we read all of our water meters in one day. So, we send a vehicle out, and they collect all those reads. They may have a list of service orders for two weeks' worth of work to go make corrections. Things happen to them, they get broke, they get drove over, cords break, batteries die. So, there's that list of maintenance that's this immediate workload. With the software-as-a-service, you get a report every day of which meter is not reporting. So, you know if something needs to be fixed way sooner, so it's a manageable workload versus a massive workload at once and waiting 30 days for that. So, you're actually capturing unaccounted-for revenue water at that point, too.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot, it's clearly a logical transition from the visual reading to, now we had trucks, but now you can, you're still going to have the truck, but it's now going to be more efficiently used because you can target those broken meters. But that wasn't my main question, my main question, because we just discussed acquiring a new water system, this is just a software contract, I understand that, but how well are we going to be able to tie into our potential new water system over the next couple of years?
That is a great question, thank you. That, so, when we talked about the, in our prior conversation with assumption of a PUD, Fidalgo Island Water System, the thought was that the construction that could potentially take place, that an antenna could be installed prior to that finalization, and once that antenna is installed, then it's a lot less work as far as, in terms of timing, to get those customers swapped, physically swapped over, if it's a meter, if it's the green box or the red box. And at the current configuration, really excited about this, the, by launching the software now with the current customer base that we have, we get to do, we call a soft launch. We're going to put an antenna on City Hall, we're going to be able to test that system and get that customer interface working perfectly, get our staff up to speed, so when it is time to swap a water system or a larger area over, our staff is up to speed. And we're going to be able to use our industrial customers as kind of a pilot to vet it out before we roll it out to everybody. So, it's a big advantage. But in order to do that, we need to purchase the software-as-a-service and be able to launch that. In the fee schedule, you'll see that there's, in the agenda bill, there's different levels of cost per year for the service with this. It's a five-year agreement that we're asking for. Within that five-year agreement, it's assuming that the system is 100% built out, when in fact, we know it will not be 100%. It's going to take us five years to get to 100%. So, those values are based on everything being built. So, there will be a little bit of savings on the initial startup, but that's the whole package that we're asking for. We talked about the five-year agreement, customer portal and data share options, working with the industrial users, pretty excited about water conservation and how they are, the industrial users are using water and how they can serve the 15-minute data interval, that's where we gathered our information from that, that industrial users felt that they could, within 15 minutes, really maximize water use and water conservation with that level of data being shipped back to them.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. McDougal.
Our residential or other business customers who might be data geeks, will they have access to that as well?
Pardon?
Would residential customers also be able to access their own data on like a near-real-time basis?
That would be our hope if we get through the launch.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah. As I mentioned, that we went ahead and plugged this into the capital facilities plan, the software agreement is based on 100% launch, and the fees are based on how many meters actually are connecting to each individual antenna. And so, currently, we're going to connect to one antenna here at City Hall, and I don't have the specific numbers of all of those that are already connected when we go live to turn the switch, how many that will grab initially, but it's a substantial amount in the town center. It seems that we've replaced quite a few of those radio units in the town center.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I don't find that project in the adopted capital facilities plan.
In the 22?
Well, we haven't, we haven't adopted a 22 capital facilities plan.
Exactly, right, thank you. So, it's in the proposed, the proposed, sorry about that.
Okay. I mean, I would prefer to evaluate the total cost of the project before proceeding piecemeal, although we have already proceeded piecemeal on part of this. We are now being asked to approve the software component, but then there's going to be the antenna collector component as well. It's, that total there is also 1.8 million over the next four years. It strikes me, that's a whole lot of money. I mean, I definitely perceive the potential benefits here, but 1.8 million dollars over four years is a lot of money. And I guess if we saw the business case, you'd stretch it over 20. I feel like I shouldn't have to make this case for you, though. I feel like we should take a pause and see the business case for this upgrade, which I'm willing to believe is possible, it's just we don't have it in front of us.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I concur wholeheartedly, because you talked about a $30,000 antenna that we've heard nothing about, or at least, again, if not on the Public Works Committee, maybe you did talk about it there, but first time hearing of that. So, yeah, again, it all sounds good, but we need to see the big overall picture, which this is the first time I've seen the big overall picture. So, a little more time.
So, what would you like to see? Just more time or more discussion or? Return on investment? Yeah, I just want to give them something to bring back to you, so you can make a, all right.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Well, in the context of the capital facilities plan, part of it is to compare costs and benefits against other projects that we might. So, that being a standalone item, I'm not sure that's the right answer, although, sorry, I don't have a solution right now, what I'm looking for, but maybe that presentation of the change to the capital facilities plan, and that will get us looking at the other parts of the capital facilities plan that we might be missing, is one possible solution.
So, tonight, it was for the contractor war for the software, but you want to see how that affects the total?
Well, I mean, the software doesn't do any good without the antenna pieces unless I'm, unless I'm missing something, and it doesn't do anything good about the water, okay.
I concur, yeah, I concur, I'm just trying to make it clear for the audience, too.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
No, I, you know, I think that utility that you're proposing is superb. I think that there are ways that we can use it, I think that there are ways that it'd benefit the city, I really do. I think futuristically, it's just a way that we have to move as technology, as our society becomes more technology-driven. In this case, I think what I'm hearing from the rest of council, my understanding is what we're looking for is not only just sort of make that business case that the money itself is, you know, that, a little bit more how it benefits the city. I think your presentation has been superb, I think you do a great job of the attention to detail, the use of language that you've used has been very clear and enlightening. I think that, though, that what we're looking to hear is just that business side of it, and I don't think that's a tremendous leap, I just think that, you know, bringing forward the data numbers for us, just to show us that tweak is what I'm looking for, and from what I hear, that's what others are looking for. Thank you.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yeah, going along with it, it's just, it's having a better understanding of the entire scope of the project, right? And that would be helpful in that capital facilities plan. And also, you know, making sure our five antennas actually going to cover all of it, or are we going to come up against it and need a sixth one? I don't know, or a four. But if there's more information to that, that would be helpful, too. Thank you.
Anything else tonight? Okay, well, Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Buckmeyer, thank you so much, and I know you'll be able to come back and answer all our questions, and we appreciate your good work. And I, you know, this technology is exciting, and it is going to help. This whole, this evening, as I listened to you, I kept thinking of the water meter reader that for decades I saw come in the back door of my business, go down the stairs, read the meter, go back up the stairs, you know, and I'm thinking, oh my goodness, we've come such a long ways, so let's continue to do this. So, thank you. Anything else, council? All right, at this time, I thank you for being here, and I will adjourn the Anacortes City Council meeting.